Please stand for the flag salute and our invocation.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, as we gather together as Fannie County Commission, we ask your blessings on our decisions today. Be with us as we make those decisions and we give thanks though, first off, Lord, for the rain that some of us received over this past week is very, very welcome. Continue to bless this region with rain, Lord. Also be with all of us in this room, Lord. Grant us health, prosperity, and keep us all safe from harm. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I said some.
You can wash that off your boots.
We start off by welcoming everybody here. We've got a nice turnout, a whole lot of young youthful, exuberant faces reflecting 4H. I'm going to have a quiz here about 4H, so in a little bit, we're going to find out which one of you is the person to turn to for answers, okay? But otherwise, the rest of you are welcome and without further ado, I'm going to ask for a motion on our consent agenda.
Does that move?
Second.
Approval?
Motion second. Is there a discussion? And if none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That carries. Our regular agenda, we need to make a couple changes. Let's move the 4H up to right after...
Fireworks.
I'm sorry?
Move fireworks up.
Fireworks. We're moving it up to where? Right after the 4H? Okay, yeah, because we have some people here to address both. And then at the end of the schedule, the agenda today, let's add a short executive session for non-elected personnel. Probably won't last more than fifteen minutes. So with those changes, I would accept a motion.
Some movement, Chairman.
Have a motion. Is there a second? I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries also. Public comment. The time on our agenda when it's your opportunity for anything not on the agenda to come forward and and the time is yours. Anybody? Public comment? Quiet bunch. Okay. Well, our business items, we'll start off with with our Fannie County 4H recognition and a proclamation. And Janet, you bring folks to before us, so it's your chance to shine in the sunshine.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Jones. Thank you all for your continued support of the Fannie County 4H program. It's been quite a year. I joined the team in January and I can say I have been nothing but pleasantly surprised and happy to be part of the Fannie County community. Everybody has been so welcoming and so gracious and kind. And our 4H families, I must say, you have some of the most talented youth here in southwest Kansas that I've had the opportunity to work with in my career. So kudos to all of you. Our program is one hundred and forty-six members strong this year. We have volunteers who have given us over two thousand hours of volunteer time. And if you compute that, that's quite a bit of money in volunteer labor and expertise to help grow our youth in southwest Kansas and keep them here. And we have been all sorts of active with a full staff of agents and a full team here in Fannie County and our district, offering many different programs from livestock, community service, public speaking, STEM, which is your science, technology, engineering, and math, among other things. And today I have with me two of our 4H members. I'd like to introduce Keely Bryant and Wyatt Jaggett. And Keely and Wyatt are going to speak a little bit more about their 4H experience and the impact that your support has made in their lives.
Come right on forward there. If you want to step out from behind that, stand there, young lady. Do you feel more comfortable there? We're all interested in hearing your experience. You go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Keely Bryant. I am ten years old and a member of the Happy Hustlers 4H Club. Today I wanted to share with you what a few things are that I like, I love about 4H. My family and I have a goat herd and raise our show goats. I love my goats. I get to help with kidding and help the vet with C-sections. Last year we had eight bottle babies, so I had lots of practice making the bottles. Since I made the milk so much, I did a demonstration on how to make my milk recipe. I also enjoy showing my goats. My goats that I showed this year were Branch, Chester, Crater, Daisy, Poppy, Patty, and Parker. Patty was born on St. Patrick's Day. That's why her name is Patty. My favorite part of 4H is getting to spend time with my friends. Some of the other things I love about 4H are taking pictures for my photography project, baking foods for my friends and family, and learning to sew and make quilts. We also get to learn fun new activities at STEM classes and make fun new decorations at arts and crafts classes. I also really enjoy being a member of the meat judging teams and competing in other speech, interview, and skillathon contests like the lead challenge at the Kansas Junior Livestock Show. I am a fourth generation 4H-er and I love all the opportunities that 4H has given me. Thank you.
Very well done.
I'm Wyatt Jaggett and I'm eighteen years old. And for me personally, 4H means to me is learning the various projects that can be done anywhere from welding and photography to the way cattle and goat, to all the way to cattle and goats. Learning the agriculture aspects in our county and the counties surrounding us, the friendships that are made that would, that have never been made if it was not for it. There are many ways to put it, but it always meant a lot to me and to better my community and learned new things almost every day from it. I showed cattle for the past six years and the people and families I met from doing it was awesome and made some lifelong friendships from it. Things I learned from it helped me become better at it and it was great. But all in all, 4H is a great thing to do, even if you don't grow up in the agriculture like home. It welcomes anyone and everyone to try their best in whatever project you want to do in it. And that's the thing I love about it. No matter who you are, you're always welcome to do projects in 4H.
Good job.
So I just want to again thank you for all your support and your help. And it's such a pleasure to see you out at our community events, whether it be county fair or other events that 4H is at. And I just look forward to our partnership in the future and all of your support. And if there's anything I can do for you, my business card was stapled to your cookies, so please don't throw that out. Please give me a shout if you need anything. I'd look forward to working with you. Thank you.
You know, the cookies go a long way, so we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Have those two youngsters stand back up here a minute because I have a question for each one of them. For the young lady, what do the four H's stand for?
What?
The four H's, each one of the, there's four words.
Head, heart, hands, health.
Good. Now, if you hand the microphone, you did very well. Do you know, do you know what year 4H was started?
I don't know.
I'm going to help you.
He's stated himself.
In nineteen oh two, started in Clark County, Ohio. So it's about a hundred and nineteen years old and it's a very worthwhile organization. So today we're going to honor your National 4H Week with a proclamation. So we'll let you hand the mic back and sit down and I'm going to read this proclamation and then we have a little bit more to go with that. National 4H Week proclamation reads as follows. Whereas 4H is America's largest youth development organization, supporting nearly six million youth across the country. And whereas 4H has helped thousands of youth in the West Plains Extension District, Fannie County, to become confident, independent, resilient, and compassionate leaders. And whereas 4H has delivered in by cooperative extension, a community of more than one hundred public universities across the nation that provides experiences where young people learn by doing through hands-on projects and the important areas of health, science, agriculture, and civic engagement. And whereas National 4H Week showcases the incredible ways that 4H inspires kids to do all, to do and highlights the remarkable 4H youth in West, the West Plains Extension District, Fannie County, will work each day to make a positive impact on those around them. And whereas 4H's network of nearly five hundred thousand volunteers and three thousand five hundred professionals provides caring and supportive mentoring to all 4H-ers, helping them to grow into true leaders, entrepreneurs, and visionaries. Now therefore, I, Dave Jones, chair of, do hereby proclaim October three through nine, twenty twenty-one, as National 4H Week throughout Fannie County and encourage all of our citizens to recognize 4H for the significant impact that they have made and continue to make by empowering youth with the skills they need to lead for a lifetime. Congratulations, young folks. You belong to a very worthwhile organization. I think to make this all official, I need a motion to approve a resolution. Would that be, be in order? No, proclamation, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move. We approve this proclamation.
I'll second.
And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And this is mysteriously already signed. I kind of felt maybe they were passing. Now, Dwayne has something to share with you, I believe, so. Only you 4H-ers, please come forward. Okay, young folks, we thank you for your attendance. Thank you for your dedication. And they're welcome to stay if they want, or they're welcomed if they have other things more important to do, we can excuse them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. All right, fireworks. This is a Lon Pishney desired discussion item, so I'm going to kind of turn to Lon and let you refresh our memories a little bit, Lon, and then we'll go from there.
Well, we have in the, we, we have in the packet the information for the resolution we passed. But the only reason that it's got my name on it is because I had asked that we discuss this now rather than later. It's, and I don't know about the rest of you, but the farther I get away from an event or from some activity, the less I remember about it. That's why it's always interesting to me when they have hearings on a national level and they're three years after the, you know, whatever. So the point of bringing it up now is let's, and whether we take official action or whether we, it's a consensus, whether we instruct our administrator to do something or a counselor to do something, that, you know, I don't know where it's going to lead us today. I don't have any preconceived notion. But I think we need to have a brief discussion. Did it work this past year that a couple of changes that we made as far as sale and discharge? And I've received, I received some comments right after the fireworks. I haven't received any in just recent weeks. And I received some positive comments about the changes and I received some concerns. And I know there were some things on Facebook right after that were negative about the discharge, not so much the sales. So I know there's still people in the community and in the county who are concerned. But I would rather do something with this now rather than in the spring or right before the Fourth of July like we did this past, or this past season is the reason I asked for it to be on the agenda this fall.
Okay, we'll open the floor for discussion.
Well, Dr. Clifford, as I said before, I'm not here to restrict commerce, so I like the at least two weekends of sales. I think in deference to the vendors, I don't mind the eight o'clock in the morning opening. I think we had some feedback regarding that. But, you know, we try to control behavior. I have a stomach for July first through fifth. My wife would prefer July fourth only, so I hear about it. But I, I realize folks are going to light things off as soon as they buy them. We can't necessarily control that. But again, in the interest of commerce, I'd like to see that two-weekend opportunity for sales. In twenty twenty-two, that would go back to, the twenty-fourth would be the Friday in June. I know if we're getting to an actual resolution, we'll have to, you know, date it for twenty twenty-two, but I liked how it went last year.
Any other commissioners?
Well, I guess my response would be, I guess I'd have to check with law enforcement. And Mike, did you see lots of complaints or did this, did we change the dates? I, you know, nobody contacted me, so I have no idea.
And I neglected to ask, is there anybody in the audience that is, that, okay, come forward, please, and identify yourself. And if you're not reluctant, the mask is hard to understand.
That's fine, yeah. My name is Bonnie Brivieska. I live in Holcomb. I've been a Fannie County resident for nearly all my life. But I spoke shortly after the Fourth of July this last year. My biggest concern is the late times, which I know this weekend, the way, this next year with it falling on a Monday, you know, when they discharge the first through the fourth, actually no one's going to need to be getting up to go early to, morning to work or anything like that. But I'm, I'm a recent, I adopted a dog here at the Fannie County shelter. I've had her for, I was one of those COVID dog owners. So anyway, I've had her for a while. She was terrified. I, I've tried natural extracts, some essential oil products that are made for dogs, did nothing. I finally ended up having to go to the vet to get tranquilizers for her. We're lucky, you know, we have, I do have a basement, so even with the basement, I had to tranquilize her to go downstairs. And it was just, it's just terrifying for, for the dog owners and stuff. I personally, I love fireworks. I always said for my fortieth birthday, which was a long time ago, I was going to have, even my fiftieth was a while back. But anyway, I was going to have a big firework show because I absolutely adore and love fireworks. Eleven o'clock at night is too late. Now, on the Fourth of July, you want to pop fireworks till midnight? Go for it. But I, and I think the two-week thing, people, when they buy them, they want to shoot them. It doesn't matter. You can sit there and say all day, oh, you can't shoot them for eight days after you buy them. It's not going to happen. People are going to shoot them, you know, like giving a little kid a lollipop. Here's your lollipop, but you have to wait three days before you eat it. No, it's just not going to happen. So, you know, I agree, like the July first through the fifth with the way the holiday falls would be a great time for discharge. You know, it's, it's your decision, but I just, just for a dog owner and the big artillery shells that are going off, you know, there was an incident in my neighborhood. I wasn't home on the Fourth of July. My daughter was. But there was an incident of a, of a man breaking his arm by one of those big artillery shells. So I just think that probably needs to be looked at too, you know, the types of fireworks possibly. So that's pretty much all I had to say. But thank you.
All right, thanks for your input. Anyone else in the audience? Come right on forward.
My name is Chris Martinez. I'm also a firework grinder here locally. And just want to say thank you guys for this resolution you guys did pass this past year. It allowed us to, at least to continue our sales. And with the amendment that was put in place, we're being able to sell from the first, I mean, not sell, to sell from the twenty-seventh through that fifth date and the discharge from the first to the fifth. I think it worked out, you know, pretty well, generally speaking. We were also still able to continue to attract customers for, from our neighboring states, specifically Colorado. You know, there are so many people that come from Colorado just to come and check out how Garden City does its firework shows and fireworks. Because with that in place, that allows other revenues to be streamlined into the Garden City area restaurants. People coming in to visit and check out what things Garden City has to offer, you know, shopping and so forth and all that stuff. So it's not only generating revenue in one area in the firework industry. It's also allowing other local retailers here to also be able to, you know, make sales and, you know, bring more money into the Garden City area. So just wanted to say thank you guys for allowing that to take place because if we had that short-end sale week... if we had that short-end sale week from the first only through the fifth, we would've lost so much business here, and those customers that, you know, we're gradually gaining from our neighboring states, they would've went elsewhere, and all that revenue would've been lost, because as mentioned earlier, once people do buy fireworks, yes, there is a tendency to try and pop them, that same, you know, once you get them, but there's only so much that we have in our control, and once we're making the sale and speaking with the customers, this is the discharge times and so forth. We, as vendors, do our part, but at the end of the day, the residents also have to do their part. So, we can only, you know, put in place the restrictions that we're instructed to, you know, to give, but at the end of the day, you know, the customers need to do their part as well, engage, as well as engage in, you know, making sure they're, you know, following the law. And so, I just wanted to say thank you guys for allowing that to take place, and, you know, um, I know the, with the lady that just talked, you know, I understand, I'm a dog owner myself, you know, I understand, you know, our pets do get frightened and so forth, and I know, um, I know one of the other vendors, you know, had, uh, talked about making some type of a, a pamphlet or something in regards to, you know, what to do, you know, to help alleviate and relieve your dog of that stressful, uh, week during the discharge and so forth. And I think what you guys did with the implementation of the first through the fifth, I think that's, you know, versus the twenty-seventh, you know, in past years, so we've reduced that timeframe by a lot, you know? But at the end of the day, the, the residents have to be accountable for, you know, doing their part and ensuring that, you know, this isn't taken away from us, because Fourth of July is meant for us to celebrate, it helps us to remember and recall, you know, what this great country did, and, you know, it's just a time of remembrance, but also it helps to, you know, bring revenue into our, you know, into much-needed areas, not just in our community, but in, you know, other areas as well, and gets, uh, Garden City looked at by other people coming in to, you know, see how Garden City puts on a fireworks show, 'cause I was very fascinated. This isn't the first time I've heard other, uh, people who visited our state say, man, you guys get wild with fireworks. You know, it's, it's a blast to come down here, because here in our states, or where we live at, we're not able, we can only pop the little ground things. We can't do the air, we're, they're, they're not able to do the aerials and so forth, so, you know, that right there is a, is a huge attraction, you know, within our area, and if I remember right, just, I believe, um, I didn't hear the fire engine trucks as much as I, I've had, as I've, as I've heard them in past, uh, years, you know? But that's not to negate the fact that, you know, what calls did come through on the, on the call line and so forth, but at the end of the day, I think, uh, the area residents are becoming more in tune that, you know, if we don't abide by these statutes, you know, eventually, this could be taken and stripped away from us. So, you know.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Did you, uh, prominently display signs about when discharge time was?
Yes.
I, I didn't frequent many, I mean, fireworks stands, so I don't know, but that, you kinda emphasized that with your folks selling.
Yes, that is one of the main, uh, factors that, you know, that our locations, we made sure that the, the customers were told, breathe the sign right here, but also our salespeople are, that were doing the, uh, conducting the sales were instructed to tell them, you know, discharge times are from this time to this time, from this date to this date, so please ensure that, you know, you're, you know, abiding by regulation and so forth.
That was quite the discussion I remember when we changed these.
Let me, uh, I wanna reiterate something that most people in the room and watching online probably know, but there may be a few that do not. Fireworks are not sold in the city of Garden City or within the corporate limits of the city of Holcomb. They're sold in Fannie County.
Correct.
So, when we talk about sales, it's out in the county. Uh, speaking for the county, we would encourage people to bring their fireworks to town, however, to fire them, not, not set the wheat field on fire. So, the lady from Holcomb brings up a valid point, but actually, the beef she has, if, if the hours are too long, should be with the city council of Holcomb. They're the ones that set your hours. And even though we had the two-weekend sales period in the county this last year, the city of Garden City shortened up the fireworks discharge dates to a five-day period. So, that's, that's what we're rehashing. Do we wanna, do we wanna change that? Do we wanna leave it like it is? And so, that's our discussion.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your comments. Uh, and I don't know if anybody else has questions for, for him right now, or if there's anybody else in the public, 'cause I've got a couple of comments, but I wanna make sure we hear from anybody.
So, go ahead, Lon.
Uh, well, my comments are, first of all, I, I'm always, uh, willing to try something for a couple of times before we might change. Uh, and the, the previous, uh, the previous ordinance had been in place for, you know, quite some time, and, and we changed it last year, so I'm not necessarily promoting any change. I do have empathy for the lateness of the discharge, uh, and I hear what you're saying as well, the cities versus the county, uh, but I don't know whether, uh, well, first of all, then the complaint is on the other side, well, then it get dark till nine-thirty, you know, when we're discharging, so then we only have an hour and a half anyhow, you know, so I don't know whether shortening that makes any difference. The one thing that I've voiced before, and I still don't quite understand, uh, and I voiced it before we voted on this last time, is the sale and discharge on the fifth. We're celebrating the fourth, and yet we do the, the sales and discharge on the fifth, so that's, that's my, I, yeah, I, I understand, and I went along with that the last time, and probably would go along with it again, uh, but that's the only question I really have about it after we shortened the discharge time, uh, this past time, so I'm, I'm not in, in favor of changing anything for this next year, but I felt like we needed to hear and speak to it now, rather than in the spring or summer.
Go ahead.
First off, I'd like to commend you. Well, well said. I agree with what you say. I have no interest in changing it as written. I probably am the one who extended it to eleven o'clock, because, uh, as a farmer, really, realistically, it's probably closer to ten o'clock before it's dark, and you can really enjoy these aerial displays.
Correct.
Uh, so, I, previously, I believe it was ten-thirty, which doesn't give you much time to enjoy what everybody really wants, is those aerial things. And I can also appreciate the dog. I even have a deaf dog that goes fritzy on this kinda stuff, so how a deaf dog hears this, I don't know, but he does. Uh, so, it, I think it's a compromise, and all sides put together, and I, I feel very good about what we did last year, and I have no desire to change it.
So, with the comments and, and from the public and from our commission, Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, suggest that we have our administrator and our couns, uh, county counselor, uh, redo, uh, the, uh, ordinance to, uh, include the appropriate dates, uh, for two thousand and twenty-two.
Is there a member of the fire department in, behind the? Yeah, you're hiding back there, I can't see you. Would, we need a fire department's perspective, 'cause you're the guys on the, in the.
The hot spot.
I'm on the hot spot. How are you? Uh.
State your name for the record, would you please?
John Ursick, with the Garden City Fire Department.
Thank you.
Um, I, this year, I, we were about half the calls we were the year before. Uh, didn't see too many issues. I thought the eleven o'clock worked great. Uh, they pretty much shut themselves down by then, 'cause they, either out of fireworks or out of time, so. Not too big of an issue for us.
The, the big complaint is over the ones that go up four hundred feet in the air and shake the whole neighborhood. However, your previous chief by the name of Alan Shelton, who I have a great deal of respect for, uh, claimed, and I have to agree with him, there are less fires started by those that go way up in the air than those that run around on the ground.
I agree. Uh, misuse of them is what starts the most fires.
Yeah, so.
Either you not using the tubes, or throwing them, or biggest thing is the direction, and then they're just gonna, people always find different ways to use them, so.
Well, would anybody have a great opposition if we just left things basically as they are for next year that were in place last year? Is that kind of the consensus I'm hearing? Is that good to go with the fire department?
Good, good with us. Uh, I mean, I can't.
Law enforcement?
Mike.
Mike, come to the microphone.
They can't hear you.
From June twenty-eighth to July eleventh, we had seven calls. So, that's not very many. Only two of those we made contact with. I don't know what the police department had, anything in the city, but that's all we had in the county.
All right, thanks, Mike. All right, then, I guess no, no action is needed, except, do we need the county counselor to address?
Well, just to redo the dates.
Just to redo the dates on the.
If I may, I believe that the date of beginning sales on June twenty-seventh is a state regulation, and we can't go earlier than that, is my understanding.
Yes, that, that is correct. You know, ju, twenty-seventh through the fifth.
Yes.
Is in the state law. But, we didn't, didn't, we shortened.
But we shortened the, uh.
We shortened the sales last year.
No, we love the sales.
Not, not discharge, we shortened the discharge.
My apologies.
I don't believe that the state, uh, regulations contemplate whether or not it's a Monday or a Friday when it starts. It's just, says June twenty-seventh.
Bet our counselor can, uh, verify that, and then we'd have to change the dates in the resolution. I mean, the, the year, the two thousand and twenty-two instead of two thousand and twenty.
Okay. Enough, enough said about, uh, fireworks, and we'll move on to the next agenda item. Gotta backtrack and see where we are. I see a whole host of folks from Fannie County Economic Development. Who's gonna speak to the topic? Morning, Lana.
Good morning.
Ordinarily report time.
And you're gonna get to hear from everybody that's here from FCEDC too, so. Uh, I did send over a report, uh, for you guys. That should've been in your packet. Excuse me. Uh, project update-wise, we can share with you that Project seven dash twenty, which we referred to as Project Green River, can now be announced. That is the Garden City Co-op, and they purchased the property, um, that's been annexed into Holcomb for some years, the KJK property. Um, they have purchased that and will be building a grain, uh, shuttle facility there, and they also have additional plans. At some point, they could add fertilizer and, um, some of the other co-op services that they do to that facility. We're working with them now on, um, rezoning. They have two little tiny participles of, of property that were never annexed in, so we're working with them on those. And BNSF has been very good to work with as far as building additional, um, spurs off of the, the rail there, so, uh, we're excited for them, and they're hoping to be, uh, starting construction before the end of the year, and definitely wanna be able to serve, uh, the spring two thousand and twenty-three crops. Any questions on that?
It's gonna go out in the middle of that big circle of track. Do they have enough to fill all of that up?
I don't, what do you mean?
Well, that, the primitive drawings I've seen.
Uh-huh.
A rail system that runs a big circle.
Right. Mm-hmm.
Looks like a racetrack. I'm just wondering what's gonna happen in the pit area of the racetrack.
Oh, haha, well, um, there is a home in the center of that that they did not purchase that's right there beside, um, where the track is, but the storage facilities, if you've seen the drawings, the storage facilities are there on the west end of the property. Yeah, so, the, the way the track is designed is really just to, to reach the length that's necessary to pull all of the cars off the main line and hold them on the property itself. Any other questions on that? All right, thanks. Uh, Empirical Foods, if you guys haven't been out by there, you need to go take a look at that. They do have a lot of contractors in town, so, um, be mindful of that. We would ask the public to be mindful of that. There's about two hundred and fifty extra people who aren't normally in our community, and they're all in that very short piece of highway out there going to and from their workplaces, so do be mindful of that, that not everybody, um, is as familiar with our traffic patterns and such as we are, so be careful.
Do they run twenty-four hours a day out there? It looks like they do.
Yeah, for some of the stuff, they're, they're really running an aggressive schedule. Yeah.
Remind me what the projected, uh, finish date is.
Two thousand and twenty-three, yeah. They're hoping to, yeah, hoping, hoping mid-two thousand and twenty-three to have that completed. Yep. Uh, Fannie County Childcare and Early Learning Network, the city of Garden City did dedicate six hundred thousand dollars from their American Recovery Plan dollars to the network, and so the network is moving forward with some locations. Um, we anticipate now that we're probably, by the end of the year, will be somewhere around two thousand, um, slots short, even with some of the additions that we've been able to make, um, simply because our population has continued to, to push us, um, out on that. Uh, the Fannie County Chat, I didn't put an update in this, but she will be hopefully getting us our report this week or next. Um, this, the housing study, uh, she was waiting on some census numbers from September thirtieth, and then so long as she got those in time, uh, she anticipates that she'll have that housing study to us. And as you well know, we know that it's going to continue to show that we're way short on housing, so. Uh, the only other thing that's, um, probably really important to mention is the West Side Source Study that you authorized us to do. We're having the kickoff for those discussions on Friday, so PEC will be out, um, they'll go out and look at some of the sites that we've identified for both residential and industrial projects, and they'll be able to start the, the process of getting us a report. Yes, sir. Any questions on any of that?
Well.
Yeah.
And you're talking about under the heading of initiatives, uh, you, you haven't referenced the First National Bank initiative. My question is this, I saw a for-sale sign on a piece of that property, but is that not still the piece of property that's, uh, by Ollie Alley and.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Up in there, behind there, um, from Quick Shop up to the Target parking lot, uh-huh, that's the same property. And there's, uh, there are a few parcels on the campus street side that are still available.
That's what they're trying to sell.
Right, all of the Kansas frontages is spoken for, yes, and I did put a note in that we met with, um, Veterans, Vets for Veterans, the VFW and the American Legion, and we've got a committee put together now that's working on a veterans memorial. What they've asked us to do is come up with five or six ideas, and then allow their membership to vote on those. Um, so, really excited about that, and very, very pleased that First National Bank has been gracious enough to work with us on that forum.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. And Shannon is gonna share some information on some of the, um, different. Yeah.
Yes, all of us have been, been in the building on Third Street. Is, is the childcare portion separately leasable, separately purchasable from the maker space portion?
Yeah, there, there's been some discussion about that. Um, yes, it is our belief that that building can be condoized to allow, um, the back portion of the building, that the newer portion, um, to be utilized for childcare and be a separate building from the front portion of the building. So, um, that's one of the things that the, that the Childcare Network Board has discussed, and will certainly pursue that with the building owners if that, if that option becomes available. There's challenges, as you can imagine, with the childcare network owning the entire building and leasing the, the front portion of that, um, because that does create an income, um, for the network that has nothing to do with its stated nonprofit purposes, which could create some tax liability. So, there's certainly some challenges there, um, for the network itself to act as the owner, but there are, of course, other opportunities, um, to get the building in, into ownership that would have a friendly lease for both parties.
I, I wouldn't think revenue would be a bad thing.
Uh, if it's not for your stated purpose in your five-oh-one C-three, it can be a very bad thing. Yeah, you only have limited numbers of things that you can utilize as income and that your, your purpose as a nonprofit corporation can be, so certainly, we agree, we would like to have revenues, but those revenues have to be derived from approved activities that the IRS has approved you for. Unfortunately, when they say nonprofit, they really mean they want you to be nonprofit. Yes, Dave?
I have a couple of questions for you, Lana. The, uh, daycare center at Nazarene Church, is that running up to your expect, expectations?
I, I think they're doing a great job, yeah. They, you know, we, obviously, as you are well aware, continue to have some challenges with getting them through the process, and that's frustrating, and it was very frustrating for them.
You wanna be more blunt and not as diplomatic as you are. Every time the state shows up to inspect the, the occupancy, it gets a little smaller.
Yeah.
Uh, that gets frustrating.
It is very frustrating. We don't disagree, and I'm, I'm actually, um, I've been charged with serving on several organizations this year and, and different activities, really focused on improving access for families and children within the state, uh, and certainly, this issue continues to raise its head, that we have to take on the regulatory environment. Um, I certainly don't think it's, it's really a matter of anybody trying to be malicious or, you know, intentionally trying to cause harm to these communities, but when we can't provide good, quality childcare, um, that meets all of the regulations, it becomes very, very challenging, and in this situation, you know, I know. it becomes very, very challenging. And in this situation, you know, I know you've, you've heard the, the stories from them, but, you know, there was a whole nother list of requirements that they literally brought out weeks after they'd already issued the temporary license and allowed them to open this. Oh, yeah, well, there's also this list that you didn't have before, but you also have to meet this, these requirements.
Do move sinks, all of that. At the recent K L P G, Kansas Legislative Policy Group, was a rather interesting discussion among several counties, having the same battle, if you will, with all of the inspections. Unfortunately, our state legislators were not there to partake of that, but it was apparent that some of that's going to be brought to their attention. I made a point, and I'm going to make it here again, when I was county emergency manager in nineteen ninety-four, we had to have a little plan in place to deal with disaster as it may impact the daycare center. And believe it or not, folks, we had twenty-eight licensed, if you will, or approved daycare centers in Fannie County. But they were the grandma, six kids, nine kids, whatever. Which leads me to the question, what would happen if the state would take a look at going back and undoing the regulations for grandma, let her have six kids in, in her living room and do like grandmas have done forever and not have all of the regulations? Would that be something you would oppose?
Yeah, it's hard to say how that would impact, honestly, impact the supply and demand. There's no doubt that it created a much larger issue with demand when they first put in those regulations. That, those were called registered childcare facilities and, and really, they didn't have any rules except, hey, I'm watching kids in my home, you can come in and look at my house, make sure it's safe and pretty much that was it.
Make sure in the closet and so on.
Yeah, so at this point, I don't know how much, how much difference it would make in a community of our size. I think in some of the smaller rural communities, there would definitely be some advantage to doing that. I don't know, again, how much of a difference it would make when you're talking about the numbers we have. But, you know, you have a lot of communities and K L P G communities included that their demand is twenty-five, thirty kids. You know, we're, we're somewhere around two thousand kids who need childcare, so very different situation. But I will tell you, one of the, one of the challenges that we've come up with in talking with legislators, because I've had calls from legislators outside of our region who say, my child is trying to open a daycare facility and can't get open and I'm a legislator. What's wrong? You don't have a lot of say. They really don't. The statute is pretty clear that it is, the regulations for childcare have been administratively handed over to K D H E. And so there's not a lot of oversight, there's not a lot of statute change that can, can really affect the regulations themselves. K D H E pretty much has administrative rule over those as it stands today. Certainly has to be talked about, though. We don't disagree.
And I have one final, final question and Duane has something with. Where is the new walk-on restaurant going to be located?
The Walk-On's Bistro?
Yes.
I don't know that they've announced where. We can tell you it's going to be on Kansas Avenue. That's all we can tell you at this time.
Well, I, you know, I'm kind of anxious to try that cuisine, so.
Well, we're kind of anxious for you to get to try it and, and I'm sure they're going to allow us to make it public very soon, but it is on Kansas Avenue.
That has a very interesting derivative of its name. The guy that started that was a walk-on athlete at LSU.
It's pretty cool, yeah.
Okay, Duane?
Mine is not a quick question, but Lana, before you step away from the mic for the staff, I just want to commend you for stepping up for the future fellows and working more at a state level. Now, I know you've got enough on your plate already, but I want to commend you for taking on that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right, I will let Shannon update you on some of the various reports and, and data we've been digging into.
He'll, he'll need to introduce himself. We're not sure we know him.
He will.
Come on, Shannon.
Do we have a PowerPoint that was?
Yes.
Right there. All right, thank you, Adam. Shannon Dick, Fannie County Economic Development. I'm Director of Strategic, or Director of Analytics now, I guess. So I'm going to go through, this is a couple of things that we've had reports on with economic development. I'm going to try to go through them very quickly, so hold on to your papers, because we're going to blow through a lot of things. If you have any questions, please let me know. Okay, so the first thing we're going to talk about is the census. Really important topic about how it went, so next slide. This is a map of the population that we have for twenty twenty as compared to twenty ten. And this is the actual census counts and this is where we have growth and, and, and some declines in population. This is kind of hard to look at, so if you go to the next one, I have it broken down by counties with positive population growth. And this is a good map for us to talk about when we're talking about the issues, because the headlines were, after the census, that rural Kansas is shrinking in population and metros are growing. If you look at our, our map here, there might be some rural counties in central Kansas or in southeast Kansas that's shrinking, but western Kansas overall had a more, about half the counties actually were growing. Excuse me. If we go to the next slide, you could say, well, where did that shrinkage happen? Where did we lose population? Southeast Kansas. And for, if you're wanting to know like the proportions of where population shrunk, the bottom three southeast Kansas counties there, those three counties lost more population than all of the western third of the state. So if we're talking about where did we lose population in Kansas, this really is a southeast, south central kind of problem. The other thing we need to think about, though, remember in two thousand and ten, we had a problem with census undercount? In two thousand and twenty, we also feel like there might have been a problem with population undercount. This time specifically with the rhetoric that we had surrounding the twenty twenty census with, with your citizenship and stuff like that. That wasn't on the, the census, but it might have shied people away from taking the census who should have took the census in some areas. So what I'm talking about is vulnerable populations. And so where do we have vulnerable populations in Kansas? Next slide. We are the ones that have vulnerable populations in south, in, in Kansas for people who might be at risk for not filling out the census because of the undercount or because of the, the rhetoric that we had specifically in the twenty twenty census. So when we're talking about population at risk, we're talking like Fannie County is about fifty percent, Ford County is about sixty percent. Sewer County is about seventy percent of the population is at risk for undercount. And so if we take some ideas about what that undercount could look like, we have three different scenarios. One tenth undercount, one seventh undercount, or one fourth undercount of just the vulnerable populations across the state. And what do I mean by one tenth, one seventh, or one fourth? That means one out of ten of those vulnerable populations did not fill out the survey. So one tenth survey means one out of ten didn't fill out the survey, the census, nine out of ten did. Or one seventh is one seventh did not fill out the census, six out of seven still did. So when we're talking about a seventh undercount, that's still seven, six sevenths of that population did fill out the survey. So if we go to that and see what that, what that looks like for our population numbers. So on my chart here, I have the two thousand and ten census count. I included also the chat, the last chat estimate, our housing estimate for Fannie County and then our actual count that we had from twenty twenty and then those three different scenarios. And the one that I want to bring people's attention to is that one seventh undercount, we're talking to experts around the community saying about how many, how many people would we conservatively say might not have done the census who are at risk? That one seventh, one out of every seven families, every seven families, that looks like it's a, 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 a pretty conservative but realistic number that didn't take the service of those, the census of those vulnerable populations. And if you look at that one seventh count and the chat estimate, our numbers are very similar. So remember that chat doesn't come from the census, that comes from how many housing units we built, what our school enrollment is, electric hookups and all that kind of stuff. So I have one measurement, we have another measurement with the census plus an undercount, and they're, they're pretty similar. So if we take that one seventh undercount, that means that we grew about five thousand five hundred people, which is a fifteen percent change from the twenty ten census. Right now, they said we have a four point six percent increase in Fannie County. That means we also got undercounted by three thousand eight hundred people. And if we do believe that we have one seventh undercount of just a vulnerable population and we look at all the vulnerable populations across all the state, that means we are actually the second fastest growing county in the state behind Potawatomi County. If we say it's a one fourth undercount, we actually are ahead of Potawatomi County for growth. We can see right now, the census says that we are the eighth fastest growing county in Kansas, which is still good. But we still have reasons to believe that there's an undercount. But it's not just us. If we go to the maps, Adam? So this is what we saw before. I'm going to flip it to the next. This is a fourth undercount or this is a tenth undercount. And you can see, as soon as we get to a tenth undercount, we're having, on the west side of Kansas, we're having a lot of growth. Go to a seventh, a little bit more, and then a fourth. Now we have a pretty significant amount of growth in our southwest region, which kind of makes sense if we talk about the growth that we've had in the dairy industry over the last ten years and all the different industries. There's a lot of people in those, in those smaller counties to the east or to the west of us and that, that say this, the loss that the census says doesn't make sense. We don't know how they got a population loss. Well, this might be explained. They, we might have missed a significant amount, a quarter, a seventh of that vulnerable population. Okay, next slide. One topic done. Next one. Highway eighty-three, specifically talking about the I C scoring system. So remember, we had the I C scoring system where we went through the, they went through the highways, got everybody's input about what's our, the future plan for the I C. And, and what, what happened, where it came out and some issues that we need to bring up about where, how the state is ranking highway projects. So go ahead. So the project I'm going to talk about and then we've been talking with K Dot about is specifically these five areas in southwest Kansas. So I have five spans of highway listed, one, two, three, four, and five. Highway eighty-three is number four, is down to liberal, labeled five is up to Scott City. So if we go look at these spans of traffic, what are we putting on these roads, the traffic we're putting on these roads? We get this graph here. And so what this graph is, is there's that shaded area. And that shaded area means that we have non-truck traffic plus four times truck traffic is greater than nine thousand. So why is that number important? So all these blue dots are where there's already divided highways in rural parts of Kansas, so we're not talking about inside cities. And what is the traffic that is going on right now on those divided highways in urban, or in rural parts of Kansas? So all those blue dots is where we'd expect to see traffic and how much traffic we'd like to see or we, we currently see with divided highways. Those highways, those highways that we're talking about in southwest Kansas, one, two, three, four, and five, that's the traffic that we have right now on our non-divided rural highway. So if we were just to look and say, well, what would we expect to see for divided highway traffic and what do we see? We'd expect the traffic that we have on ours to be actually divided already, but we don't see that. So let's, let's go on. So we have the traffic. So Kansas went through, K Dot went through, and we had I C scoring. They scored all the different projects and they divided up between a couple of different ways. Present capacity, future capacity, trucks per lane, E P D O, which is like an injury thing, and then a black box. And I'm only going to talk about the, the black box economic score, but overall, we get seventy-five points out of this system here. The problem with the present capacity, future capacity and trucks per lane is all of those are capped at about seventy-five percent or whatever. So if we were at seventy-five percent capacity, we scored a hundred percent of the points possible. If we were at a hundred and fifty percent capacity on our roads, we would have got the exact same amount of score. So we have some other problems besides what I'm just going to talk about, but I'm going to focus on this black box of traveler benefit and added G D P. And they're calling this the economic score. So if we go to the next slide, we're going to say, well, why do we care about twenty-five points? This is a graph of all the different I C projects and we can see, so each of those horizontal lines is five points up. So the vertical, all the blue bars is where all the points were scored for each of the projects. And so you can see like if five points, if we had a project that was in the middle and it goes at five points, it's in the top third. So we're going to be talking about this economic score, which is twenty-five points really soon. We can see how a five points change can make the difference between a project that doesn't get done and does get done. Okay, so we're going to talk about this, just this portion of it, which is the black box, which is called the adjusted economic score. Okay, so go, next slide. So they use a proprietary system to calculate added G D P for these road projects. I don't know how to do that, but I do know how to measure G D P. So here's our G D P per capita in two thousand and eighteen for Kansas. You can definitely see there's a trend and you can definitely see that the cap, the G D P produced per capita is definitely higher in western Kansas than is in eastern Kansas. In fact, some of the counties just north of us are ninety thousand, which is three darker shades of blue than even is on the map. So we can take that G D P and turn it into, go to the next slide. We take that G D P and look at how much traffic we have in all our roads and so we can assign a G D P per unit of traffic. And you say, okay, where do we have high units of traffic that are, that are high value? And that's what this map is. One unit of traffic is worth how much to Kansas's G D P? And it turns out that Fannie County is one of the highest. We're over a thousand dollar per unit of traffic on our highways. So before we go to the next slide, if we were to say, which traffic on a scale of one to a thousand, where would we put the thousands or the higher numbers? If we were going to say, how important is the road system to our state's G D P? And if you've seen this before, I don't want you, I don't want you to answer this, but where would you assign high values of G D P generating from traffic? I mean, it's, it's a trick question, because obviously, you would put it down in southwest Kansas where we have units of traffic that are six hundred, eight hundred, a thousand dollars a unit. Whereas in eastern Kansas, we're talking about, some of these get down to sixty dollars a unit. Well, K Dot's black box system went ahead and assigned a number between one and a thousand on how much they viewed each unit of traffic. How much does that traffic add to their G D P? Well, if you thought we were going to score high, you're wrong. We scored out in western Kansas somewhere between zero and ten points for how important this, our traffic is to Kansas's G D P. And a new loop around Kansas City scored one thousand and five. So we definitely see that there is an issue with the way that they were, and so they take this number, they scale it to twenty-five points in the end. But again, if, if we're missing on five points or ten points, we're going from a project that could have got done to there's no way it's going to get done. So we definitely have an issue with the way that they are calculating the benefit of G D P with highways in, in rural Kansas specifically. So that's a thing. Next slide. Some other issues that we have with I C system is, on average, a project length in, for our district, District Six, is twice as long as the, in the projects in eastern Kansas, and that causes three specific issues. One, benefit to cost ratio favors shorter projects. Each of these road spans are given a benefit. So it could be a hundred benefit and a hundred benefit, but if one of them is twice as long and one of them is half as long, when you do divide the cost to benefit, our longer projects get pushed down because it took longer to get that same benefit. So we have that problem. The way that they calculate their, their injury rate, the E P D O, favor shorter projects and also cost selection favor shorter projects. So we have some other issues with that. But not only that, we have a feeling that they're also not considering rural congestion times in the state when we're talking about considering projects to expand. So go on. So what this is, is I was going back and forth between Scott City a bunch of times and I didn't know what four thousand, because they said we have four thousand traffic a day on there, and I didn't know what that felt like. So I started to count the cars, just to see what it's like. And I counted cars and I could get this curve here and it turns out that if we take the cars that I was counting and make it into a formula, I actually found out that we were getting about eight thousand six hundred and twenty-nine cars per day on this highway. This is between Garden City and Scott City. And I was actually getting this same count a little bit north of Scott as well. So that means that if we take the same breakdown of cars to trucks, we're getting about five thousand truck, or non-truck traffic a day, three thousand five hundred truck traffic. One thing we do need to say is this was during wheat harvest time. So there was a little bit of, of wheat cars, all the grain cars and all that stuff, but not, it wasn't just like combine, combine, combine. It was pretty normal traffic. So we have an estimate that during a harvest, and harvest isn't one day, harvest is a month, we have a count that's way past what K Dot's reporting. So if we go to the next slide, number five is the road between Garden City and Scott. If we actually put the counting that we got during wheat harvest, go ahead to the next one, that scores all the way up there, way, way, way off the chart. And again, we're not divided. The blue dots there are divided highways in rural Kansas. So we have some evidence that, I think I have this on the next slide. Yeah, so we have some evidence that K Dot might not be considering rural congestion time periods when deciding expansion projects, such as planting and harvesting, because I mean, we have corn harvest going on right now. And like they do for urban congestion issues, we know they care about rush hour, we know that they care about shift work and stuff like that in urban settings. Are they making the same kind of things for rural, like harvest, planting, stuff like that? So what we found in I C, go ahead, is there's already the need for the traffic, so we already can show that we have need for traffic. We already showed that we have the G D P out in southwest Kansas. We, we should already be warranting the complete dividing of highways fifty, four hundred, fifty-four, and eighty-three. We see that the I C scoring system maybe have some major flaws and it seems to be highly biased against rural areas. And under the scoring system, some passing lanes, if we do passing lanes instead of dividing, it might be the end of being able to divide them even in the future because of the way the scoring system is set up. I didn't really get into that why this time, but there's a whole nother fifteen minutes about that. So. I C stuff, good so far. The next ones are just a couple of slides. Okay, trade area, yes.
It would be interesting to see your bar graph.
Would be interesting to see your bar graph with the blue lines with the, with like a red economic score on top.
That, that actually describes the economics of the state?
Yeah.
That would be great. I can do that. Okay, trade area. One of the things that we had, um, that's been a question about, um, our area is we had a study, if we go to the next slide. This is a trade area that was done for us, um, as the trader for Garden City and Finney County before Shoalman Crossing. And so one of the questions is, we haven't had an update, a full update of this, of what of, what's our trade area since Shoalman Crossing is built. The important things to note is that we had a, a primary of two hundred, secondary of fifty-two thousand, and then a tertiary is two hundred and thirty-seven. That's everybody inside of those circles. Um, we were able to go to the next slide. We were able to do a method, um, using Facebook and measuring, u- using social media to get our trade area. So we're able to update that. Um, so now we can say from each of the different cities, what percent participate in our trade area? Um, and it comes to be, our new trade area is actually two eighty-three, um, for our, our people that were solidly in there, and we're over five hundred for the entire trade area. Go to the next slide. Yep. So, um, we got a total trade area of our main. So before our primary was just two hundred. Now we're talking about our, our primary, our main trade area is two hundred and eighty-two thousand. And the important thing, I think, to a lot of people is our trade area represents ten point two billion dollars, which is bigger than the metro, uh, Pueblo. It's bigger than Topeka, and it's bigger than, um, Santa Fe, New Mexico. So we are, our trade area represents a very, very large personal, um, income, um, which is rivals, um, some small metros. Go ahead. And then this is the slide that we put in there, where we have to explain, like, are people really driving a hundred miles to Garden City to go shopping? It's like, well, if you want to go to Sam's Club or Target or Buffalo wings or Home Depot or Menards or TJ Maxx or Old Navy or so forth, you do, and people are, and we can actually demonstrate where they're coming from, um, with this. So we do have an update to our trade area and, and, and like we thought, i- it's higher than it was before Shoalman Crossing. And the last thing, um, is the quick COVID numbers. Um, this is just my last update from, from the last board meeting. Um, this is some data from St. Catherine Hospital. Um, the average number of hospitalized COVID patients per day over the last two months, I'm only talking about our hospital, only St. Catherine, and I'm only talking about data from August and September. The average number of hospitalized patient, COVID patients per day is eleven point two. So on average, they have eleven point two hospitalized COVID patients per day. Uh, the average number of new patients is one point four, and the average ICU bed occupancy is six point eight. And remember, there's eight total. We did have one day where it was at nine. Um, so that's some breakdowns of who is in the hospital with COVID, what's, what's some of the characteristics of it. Um, nine out of ten of the people that are in the hospital, St. Catherine Hospital with COVID, uh, because of COVID, um, are not vaccinated. So one out of ten are vaccinated, nine out of ten of the hospitalized patients at, uh, COVID patients at the hospital are unvaccinated. Um, percent of hospitalized patients with COVID that have died is, is seven percent. So one of every fourteen patients that are in the hospital with COVID, um, end up dying. And then the percent of hospitalized COVID patients that are from outside the county is right below fifty-five percent. So the majority, slight majority of patients are actually coming in from outside of Finney County, um, and using our hospital here. Last slide, or two slides ago. Um, rate of eligible population with at least one dose. So we're talking about the KDHE data for vaccinations. We actually just last week, uh, popped over, and we are now the number one county for eligible population with at least one dose of the vaccine at above seventy percent. We finally got ahead of Johnson County, and we are now pulling far away ahead of Douglas, Shawnee, Harvey, and these are the top five. There are some counties that are way lower than this. And then also, um, eligible population with the completed vaccination series, fifty percent of our population that's eligible does now have a completed vaccination series. Um, I will just skip to where the question is, is why is there such a difference between where we are here on the one dose and where we are on complete? And the best I can, I have seen so far i- is because of the mandates that we have at some of our local businesses, where we have a bunch of people getting one dose, but we don't have enough time for them to get the second dose. So, um, some of our industrial, um, partners, um, might have be leading this case, and we should see that number in the next couple of weeks on the full vaccination series to also come up and, and get closer to our rate of just one dose. Last slide. We can see that red graph here, this is how many, um, uh, cases we have. Um, so we can definitely see that we did have, I mean, we, it didn't make as much, um, news that we had a recent spike, but we're in, in a spike of COVID cases. And the last thing you want to talk about is the positivity rate of Finney County. Right now it's twenty-five point six. It's been up to thirty or thirty-six, and, and the state is really dinging us on that as, as a negative and, and saying that that's a bad thing. But to me, knowing what we know about our community, I want that number to be a hundred percent. And why do I want that number to be a hundred percent? It's because we have, uh, very available, freely available rapid tests. And remember what that number is telling us. That's somebody going into the health department, taking a test at the health department and testing positive. Now that we have rapid tests that we can get, I mean, basically anybody who wants a rapid test can go to the health department, live in Finney County, we're a distribution area at, at the economic development. We really want people to take that first step at home, get that test. If it comes back negative, we save the health department some work because there's no reason to go and take that test and go get another negative test at the health department. If it comes back positive, then we need to elevate it. So the, for, uh, with the situation that we're in now, the higher this number gets, the better I feel about how we're doing with those rapid tests and making sure people are getting tested at home when they have the chance to, in between times, and we're only advancing on the positive cases to the health department and not positive and negative, because every negative case that they do there is time and your resources that was spent on somebody who got a negative. Let's make sure we get those negatives, catch those negatives with the rapid tests at home and only pass on and put into the system those positive cases. So I want that number to be as high as possible. That's going to hurt our, when we get the gray card and stuff like that, but I think that's a good number to be high with the situation right now. And I believe that is the last slide I have, and used up all three minutes of my presentation.
All right. Questions?
No, the only, the only comment I would make, I, I saw, uh, Shannon's, uh, presentation when we were meeting in Scott City here recently, and, and, uh, that opened my eyes with regard to the scorecard. And I did not know we had that kind of an issue where you cap out and you're no longer going to be able to, to, uh, sell your case, if you will, because of that scoring system. So, uh, I think we've got some work to do to help, uh, the secretary and, and others in the D O T, uh, or in KDOT, uh, to understand that we may have a flaw in the scoring.
Yeah.
Amen, Shannon. Um, I've gone to, I don't know how many KDOT meetings. More than I want to count.
Yeah.
And my argument with them every time is I've driven thousands of miles in the state of Texas, and they have thousands of miles of rural four-lane highways, at grade four-lane highway. And you try to convince this KDOT that those are a viable thing in our area, and they don't want to listen because they say they're not safe. And I said, well, it's amazing that one of the largest states in the union has that many miles and they're not safe.
Even, even worse, Nebraska, on the Panhandle, Nebraska, where like absolutely nothing happens. They went through a whole process of four-laning all theirs. Their studies, and they're going to complete it here in the next five to ten years. Their studies put their best-case scenario traffic lower than what we are doing on our highways out here. They're hoping that they can get to what we already have with this dividing of highways. And that's Nebraska in the middle of nowhere, Nebraska. It, it's really strange how our state is treating rural areas versus how other states treat their rural areas.
In the amount of money they spend on the future, what they keep saying in the future,
Mm-hmm.
instead of doing it what we need right now.
That Lubbock, Kansas City is the future.
Yeah. It's, it, it is, it's frustrating. That's why I've kind of signed off not even bothering to go to the meetings anymore.
Yeah, and I think there's some progress that's getting made, at least. I don't think a lot of people, frankly, we just didn't have the capacity to analyze what they were doing, and I don't think anybody was looking at what they were doing when they're scoring. And now that we're at least looking, I think we have at least a case we can make and say, you're not doing this right at all. And so hopefully it'll make a difference.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
All right. Thank you.
We've heard from everybody except for Bob.
So I'm going to make it quick and easy. First of all, on behalf of Sam Hands and Stuart Nelson and myself, we appreciate being able to serve on economic development. It's, uh, been a real experience. And thank you for working so quickly to approve the Westside Sewer Study. We think it's going to be really critical. And, and for Mr. Reese, he came the other day on the co-op project and got a firsthand look early as to what the impact's going to be and what the county needs to do so he and his staff can kind of get ready and get started. And I think on the daycare thing, I, Commissioner Jones, you hit it on the head. There are so many stumbling blocks that come. That's why we need to get started. So if and when your ARPA stuff comes around and we're still in line, we'd really appreciate, uh, some kick in of some funds so that we can get the process started. So we can start going through all the hoops to get us there. So it's been a solid quarter. It's really a lot of fun to work with professionals. Sometimes we have to worry keeping up with Shannon, but he does a great job and his tenacity working with KDOT. They have now invited him, and he's had that first conversation of what do you mean our formula is wrong? And he did open their eyes. And don't forget, Larry, there's another KDOT meeting tomorrow morning at nine. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time today.
Hertzel. Yeah, yeah.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Bob.
Appreciate it. Anything else? Memorandum of Understanding between the Garden City Fire Department and Finney County EMS. And come forward, Skylar, and are you getting along with the fire department okay?
Pretty, pretty well. We get along pretty well. Yeah. So what we're looking at here is, if you look at the memo, we're talking about, um, formalizing an agreement between, um, EMS and the Garden City Fire Department, um, to assist us with our calls as necessary. This is action we're actually already doing a little bit, uh, but we would like to just get it formalized, um, so it's all on the up and up. Um, addition, what we're really looking at here is, in the event that, uh, all of our trucks are busy and, um, uh, another call comes in, that the fire department would be dispatched to provide a first response to that, um, provided that they are all, um, or at least two of them are, um, E M Ts, um, on that call. Um, that will help us tremendously in the event when we're running short-staffed or we're just simply busy. And that way we can utilize another count or another community resource, um, to help, um, provide the services that we need for, um, the citizens of Finney County. Um, so right now we have, um, uh, the agreement right now is that, um, they would be running what we would call second out. And so that is, right now we do have, um, a, um, sign-up procedure where people off-duty can sign up to cover a page, carry a pager, carry a radio and come in as we need them. Uh, we're running into some struggles with that due to low staffing, and oftentimes that, um, on-call service is not, um, not covered. Um, this would allow us to utilize people who are already on, on duty, although with, with the city. Um, they would not be providing transport services. They're not going to take anybody to the hospital. They're just going to go there and provide care until we can arrive when an ambulance, um, comes free. Um, additionally, uh, we would utilize them for when we run into, um, individuals in cardiac arrest. Um, these are critical patients that sometimes just need more providers there than just the two people on the ambulance. Uh, right now we'll send an ambulance and we'll send the supervisor there, and if they have a free ambulance, we'll send that other ambulance there to help out with them as needed. But then we're utilizing a lot of our resources for this one patient, which is, is necessary. Uh, but by utilizing the fire department, um, in these situations, we can help, um, keep our ambulances free for other calls. A lot of times that extra help is just help move the patient, fetching equipment. Um, it doesn't necessarily always need, um, a, a trained provider, um, to help out with that. Uh, but, uh, with this, with the fire department, that would help us out tremendously. Um, additionally, uh, we would be providing a, um, if you look in that initial memo, um, it says, uh, Finney County EMS will provide and maintain medical bags and supplies at no cost to G C F D. Um, so we would be providing them some medical equipment. It's, it's, um, very low cost. Um, we're utilizing some of our bags that we already have. Um, the supplies that they would actually be using, um, there's probably around a three hundred dollar initial setup cost for that, and then just maintaining that afterwards. Um, these are very low, low, um, costs, um, bandages, um, there's oxygen, stuff like that. So these aren't, these aren't high. These are not high, um, costs. We expect our maintenance, um, over, once this is initially established, our maintenance will be maybe like a hundred bucks a year or something like that. So fairly low. Um, additionally, um, we will provide a, uh, a minimum of an emergency medical responder certification um, for, um, the, the, the fire department. This would allow them to get all of their staff to be a EMS provider. Uh, it's at the very base level. It's even, um, just below the E M T. And we're in talks about ha- having an E M T class for them as well. And what we mean by, um, um, it says this course and certification will be provided by Finney County EMS at no cost. Uh, what we mean by that is that, um, Finney County EMS would not charge the fire department like an instructor fee or a fee to use the facilities. Uh, but the fire department would, would be responsible for, uh, purchasing like classroom materials, books for their students, um, and the cer- and the certification fees that, once they go through testing. Um, so there is a little bit of a cost for them, uh, but EMS would not be charging them for an instructor or for, uh, the, the facility if we're teaching it there.
Sounds to me like you are formalizing kind of what has been in place.
Yes.
Here.
Yep. Yeah, there's a little bit extra. It would allow them to provide more. Right now, what they're doing is basic C P R and first aid. That's kind of all they're allowed to do. Uh, those, those that are E M Ts, that are certified E M Ts, the M O U itself will allow them to practice, um, some of those skills that they have the equipment for and the training for, um, on, on scene.
Skylar, I see a copy of this memorandum went to our county councilor. Has she signed off on it?
Yeah, I believe so. Mm-hmm.
Okay. So any, uh, questions from the board? Before I ask for approval to sign a memorandum? Done? Then I would seek a motion authorizing the chairman to sign a memorandum of understanding between, uh, Garden City Fire and Finney County EMS.
Still moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? If none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We'll get it signed here in just a few seconds.
All right. Thank you very much.
Law enforcement center, who's going to come and speak to that? I see a county administrator moving.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm, uh, Captain Regal with the Police Department. I was, uh, designated to come speak for you for this today. Um, this is familiar. This came in front of you last year, I believe, uh, in regards to municipal court. We were going to vacate that, but we wanted to keep the space. Um, and that was agreed upon at any space, uh, that Sheriff's Department or Police Department occupied, we could do with, or the city or the county occupied that we could do with what we wanted. Um, this amendment comes forward to, uh, because District Court is vacating the space downstairs, and with that open space, we've worked with the Sheriff's Department to try to, uh, come to an agreement of, of moving some space around that better works for both, uh, entities. City Police Department would take over District Court downstairs and some of the offices surrounding that. Uh, we would give up some of our space on the main floor, which is where our police officer squad room is, and our current evidence room, once it moves over to the old Telegram, uh, building. There's some other minor, um, offices that we have, uh, given up in exchange as well. I think the total space, uh, changed the county gains like a hundred and fifty square feet out of all the movement of that.
I have a couple of questions for you. Um, the, in our packet were, um, elevations, slide, uh, slides, if you will, of occupancy. Can you kind of go through those? I don't know. It's going to be difficult here today. There we come up with one. Uh, the county has, what floor is this? Is this a basement or is this the?
Yes, sir. That's the basement.
Okay, I don't see an emergency operations center there nor, uh...
To the yellow on the very right there, that is emergency management. I believe that the conference room or the training room is designated as shared space. But the yellow, the offices are in yellow.
Okay. I have a little dog in a fight here, if you will. When that was built, I was county emergency manager, and so you'd try to set up a, a three-day school, three days of training. Well, the municipal court came along, and by golly, they needed that every Wednesday to put their overflow in. So now you figure out how you set up training. Is this, is this now with the municipal court moving, is that now all, uh, emergency operations center, five or seven days a week? That's my first question.
It's shared space is what it's designed as. I can't tell you how that was.
Okay, but who controls the datebook?
The emergency management does.
Okay, that, that to me... Okay, that, that to me is, is a fair application because before, all of a sudden, I'd find out gee, the city had planned something right in the middle of my, my training period. So I'd have to go to the fairgrounds or somewhere else to put on, put on training.
No, we, whenever we have an event down there now, we ahead of time get with them to ask if it's available. And if it's available, then we can use it.
And then to the, to the outside, across, I'm trying to figure out what that area is next to the staircase.
On the, the bottom left, blue box, is that what you're?
Well, no, it's, it's a yellow box.
Oh.
Is that, that's probably storage where the air compressor is that makes all the noise.
I wanted to answer your question, Dave, on the, on the room I talked to. Do you remember where they have the waiting room for the municipal court? Chief Rood, he said since they're basically vacating that, that someday in the future we could go in there and make that room even bigger. Just take over that space.
All right, all right. Well, then I, I don't have any issue, but except I wanted to make sure there, if you don't mind while you're standing there, if, if Adam can go to another level, this would be the, what we might call a ground floor, correct?
Main floor, yes, sir.
Main floor. Does anybody have any question there about usage? And then on up a floor and that's, that's going to be mostly jail?
Yes, sir.
And there's one more part of the floor. Yeah, okay. All right, that, what do we share? We're sharing prisoner's space is what we're talking about. I just wanted to make all of that clear, so. That's the end of my questions. Any of the Commissioners or any of our staff have any questions?
Nope. My only question is, what do you see as a completion date for the new municipal court and, and some of the timing, just timing of then doing some of this remodel and so forth and so?
I believe they're expecting it to be done at either late or the first of next year, just towards springtime. But I'm not really involved in that project, so I don't know the exact details.
Yeah, I just hadn't heard recently, you know, what the projection was. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to authorize a signature.
Chairman, I'll approve, or I'll move for alternative one, the approval for the revised law enforcement center agreement that Chairman may sign.
And there's your second.
Second.
Have a second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? We'll get that signed, Mike.
Thank you.
And you have anything else, Mike? Surplus items for auction, boy, there was a list. Would you want to stand up and read that list off, Mr. County Administrator?
I don't even want to sit here and read it off. But what you have in front of you is a resolution that allows you dispose, dispose of the property that's no longer useful within the county for operations and so forth. Any of the property that's not sold in is formally disposed of and that's, that's tracked through our inventory process.
This kind of a somewhat irregular, regular deal to sell, except?
That's correct, that's correct. We, we formalize the process in conjunction with the formalization of your inventory process as well and so.
This upon approval will require the signature of all of us.
Correct.
You need a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Motion or discussion, whatever.
Well, I'll, I'll move that we dispose of the surplus property.
Okay.
Second.
Motion second, discussion.
Eighteen, as Dory states.
That's what I thought I heard you say.
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
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 As opposed? All right, we'll get that passed around here.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of order, could the mistyping in the first sentence of that resolution be corrected before it goes out?
Yes.
Thank you.
We're going to confer a law degree on you. You're catching. Okay, our, as those are coming around being signed, it's time for our Board of Governors. Is there anything that we want to take up today as Board for Governance?
Well, the, the only thing I will mention, Bill had asked me the other day after the KLPG meeting, when KAC legislative policy would be in place, and that is after the annual conference. It's voted on by the delegates, so toward the end of October, we will have the KAC legislative policy. Since I'm not on that committee this year, I don't know what process they're in or what changes they're proposing until I get to Kansas City in a couple of weeks. That'll be coming here very shortly.
Okay. Anything else on governance? What did I miss?
Your executive session.
Well, that's, that's come up. I put it down here after the reports. I apologize to you for your mistake. It won't take long. Okay, county counselor report.
Good morning, just some things of note for you all. One thing that we've started drafting and looking at is a procedure for disposing of county surplus property so that we're not having to go back to the statute and follow those formalities, but coming up with our own separate formalities, which the statute also allows. Other counties around the state typically have done that, so I think that'll streamline the process for the sale of surplus property. I know Dory has sent me, there are several inquiries with regard to selling some real estate property that's also surplus or unneeded, and so that may affect those. But hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll have something for you to look at as far as a resolution. I can't think of anything else off the top of my head for you, but so that's all.
That's it?
Yep.
Mr. County Administrator.
I've asked Kelly to come in and, as you are well aware, we do have a employee in service program that'll be taking place next Monday. And I'd like to have her brief you on that process as well. Prior to that, just a reminder, you do have a ribbon cutting ceremony on the 11th at 10:30.
Is it down to just one meeting or does it move on to, to farmland and over to empirical?
All I see, I, the last I knew, it included all three, but I only show one in this email and I'll double check that and get that shipped out.
Because it kind of clobbers our participation in the.
At least the morning, yeah.
Go right ahead there, Kelly.
Good morning. Well, I just handed the clerk a copy of our agenda with, on the back page has our speaker information. So Monday is Columbus Day and you guys had authorized the county buildings to be closed. The employees will report down to the fairgrounds for some professional development and some fun throughout the day. We'd like you guys to join us if you could. We'll be having breakfast. The department heads are going to cook breakfast. They're also going to be helping with lunch and then the committee members will be helping throughout the day with a little bit of everything, so.
I used to get so aggravated when I was a county employee, you'd have something and the Commissioners all were busy.
Oh.
Now I understand conflicts.
Right. So yeah, we'd love to have you. Our benefits vendors will also be there, so. Okay, any questions?
Any questions for Kelly? Anything else, Robert?
No, just a, as you've already mentioned, the local consult, that's tomorrow, virtual though, that changed to virtual. Then a little bit later on this week, do have a meeting with Jeff Stevens on the ARPA funds, trying to get an update on the rulings for use for those funds. Okay.
All right, all right, you ready to go?
I have nothing to report.
Sure, well, we had Secretary of State Scott Schwab here. A few of us were able to attend, Dory was there. I went to the economic development meeting, so I'm finally catching on to Shannon's wisdom, having heard it twice. We've had a very good NACO American Rescue Plan seminar, maybe it was KAC. Were you on that, Robert?
It was with the KAC.
KAC, and a lot of insight there. There may be building funds yet available. Seemed like it was the main topic, can you build a new health department facility across the state? We have GOP meeting 6:00 PM tomorrow. Karen Tyson is here, Senator Tyson, Running for State Treasurer, attended the Grant County Home Products Dinner with several of you. I'll remind you that the forums for local candidates begin tomorrow. They're all held in Garden City, City Chamber. The city candidates or all incumbents are tomorrow at 6:00 PM. Next Monday, the 11th, the Board of Trustees, Community College. The 12th will be USD 457 candidates. And Thursday, skipping Wednesday, Thursday will be combined USD 363 at 6:00 PM and then Holcomb Commission at 7:30 PM. But that will also be in the Garden City chambers. That's all I have.
Thank you. A little higher than normal for the road issues.
My report just, some visits with constituents and the two meetings of note, as I did attend a meeting in Scott City with Scott City folks and Garden City folks with regard to Highway 83. And, and they are going to present some information tomorrow during the virtual KDOT meeting. And then Bill and I attended the Home Products Dinner in Ulysses that brought out a number of folks on the political aspect. And I just, and the reason I mention that is what a great event for not just Ulysses, Grant County, but for Southwest Kansas. And they've been doing that, what'd they say, 58 years, I think it was, or something like that. Just an outstanding example, and that's what Scott Schwab and some of those folks noted. Great example of community people coming together for a huge event.
And the Milo Donuts are very good.
And the strawberry jam, and the strawberry jam.
I don't have much other than I did attend the retirement reception for Teresa Maddox. She retired from the EMS after what, 34 years, as I recall something like it?
I think it was around 21 or 22 years with the county and then prior to that, serving the community through a hospital.
Yeah, she, she's a, quite a lady. The October 11 discussion, we've kind of already had. And, and then I want to share a text message I received from former Sheriff Baskew. Hi, Dave, hope you have had a wonderful weekend. I'm getting ready for my last day on Thursday. I was just checking one more time before my last day, if you and the other Commissioners were interested in my proposal for a severance request that I sent to all of you. Thank you, Dave. And I responded this way, Kevin, I brought up your response previously and received no feedback to pursue either of them, including extending your salary until the end of the year. I am not sure what else there is that I can do except suggest that you request, that your request be included as an agenda item, so that you're aware that that question's out there. Hearing none, I'll assume that I did what you desired. With that, folks, I would ask for a motion to go into executive session for a period of, let's say 20 minutes, to discuss non-elected personnel and to include the county commission and to include Rob, our county administrator and our county council. And so with that motion, then we'd be back here about 25 after 10 o'clock. Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go to the executive session.
Okay. Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
a text message I received from former Sheriff Baskew. Hi, Dave, hope you have had a wonderful weekend. I'm getting ready for my last day on Thursday. I was just checking one more time before my last day, if you and the other commissioners were interested in my proposal for a severance request that I sent to all of you. Thank you, Dave. And I responded this way, Kevin, I brought up your response previously and received no feedback to pursue either of them, including extending your salary until the end of the year. I am not sure what else there is that I can do, except suggest that you request that your request be included as an agenda item, so that you're aware that that question's out there. Is there anything that you want me to do differently than what I did during non- input? I'll assume that I did what you desired. With that, folks, I would ask for a motion to go into executive session for a period of, let's say, 20 minutes, to discuss non-elected personnel, and to include the county commission, and to include our county administrator and our county council. And so with that motion, then we'd be back here about 25 after 10 o'clock. Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go to the executive session.
Okay. Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
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 I'll repeat my question with the mic on. The Public Works Director position, is that up for interview?
Kelly's working on the, putting together the books. I believe she may have those put together already. I think we were going to ask Larry and Duane perhaps to participate in the interviewing process for those positions. But she's gathering that up, and she'll get them out to both those two commissioners if they agree to sit on the interview committee.
You agreeable, Duane?
Agreeable.
Okay.
So we're the only ones who know how to run a road grader.
Pretty much.
Okay. Went around the table one last time. Anything to worry that needs to be...
Yeah, before we adjourn, I wondered if we could talk about the canvas date for the upcoming election. The election's on November 2nd. We have to do that within 13 days following the election, so your second meeting in November would be the drop dead date, so to speak, to have that. Or we could have a special meeting the week prior. I just kind of wanted to get your take on that, so.
So we need to meet first and then fifteenth?
Correct.
So we need to really meet the, come in for canvas ballots on the 8th?
You could. You could, or we could wait till the 15th. That is just the last day we can do it, so there, you know, some risk there, not a lot, but it's up to you guys if you're available.
The 8th, I could do it if you want to do it then, or...
And just like last time, we will have the provisional canvas first and then we'll have to go process those, so there is some, you know, that delay in there which may make sense to have a regular meeting where you've got things to do.
I'm not available on the 15th. I'll have to designate a substitute if you need to replace me if it's on the 15th.
The date you choose, so I just wanted to get your feedback on that.
I vote 8th.
I'm easy to vote wherever.
Wherever you need.
I guess we just said it.
You'd be done with harvest by then.
Lon, are you in town?
Well, like I said, I prefer the 15th just to have it all on one day, but I can be there.
Well, Bill won't be here on the 15th, so...
Okay.
You Dave.
How about the 8th? Is that settled?
What time? I'll have to move my clinic.
Eight thirty.
Okay, thank you.
November 8th. Anything else? Robert? Linda? Yep.
No, it's not a big deal, but while it's on my mind, the Kansas, the county, Kansas Association of County Councilors, CLE is the 19th, which typically when I see someone schedule a statewide conference on a Tuesday in Kansas City, I roll my eyes and assume they didn't want anyone from Western Kansas to attend. But I am considering it partially because that date is still clear on my calendar. And secondly, because this is my first year doing it, I think it might be of great value to have those personal contacts and they are doing it in person. So if, just logistically, if you are okay, I may ask for a Zoom link to be at the next council meeting, which I think is on the 18th, is that right? Yeah, the commission meeting on the 18th, just so that, since I'm going to the football game that weekend, I think I don't have to travel back to Garden City.
Now the truth comes out.
That's, yeah, it is about football, but if you guys are okay with that, I may go ahead and do that.
Sounds good.
Okay.
One final quick question. We had a recent five pages of delinquent taxes in the newspaper. Is there a tax sale on the horizon somewhere?
Trista Joyce and I have been in conversations about that, so that should be coming down the pipe.
Anything else? Until October, well, we're going to bunch several of us going to get together next Monday at ten thirty, correct, for the ribbon cutting? And then we'll be back for a regular meeting on the 18th. Until then...